If you are having technical difficulties, please use the chat box to type in your issue and our team will attempt to support. We're going to give folks just a couple of more minutes to join and we will begin promptly shortly after 6:00 PM Pacific. Thank you. Hello, I want to welcome you all to the public hearing for the Port Hill Land Port of Entry Expansion and Modernization Draft Environmental Assessment, also referred to as the EA. We're going to begin the meeting in another minute or two and as a reminder, this meeting is being recorded and your audio will be muted for the duration of the call until the public comment session where you'll have a chance to provide any comments and ask questions. If you have any technical difficulties, please feel free to type your issue in the chat box and we'll do our best to try and address your issue. We'll start the meeting here momentarily. Thank you. Hello and thank you to everyone for attending today's meeting. On behalf of the U.S. General Services Administration or GSA, welcome to this virtual public hearing for the proposed expansion and modernization of the Port Hill Idaho Land Port of Entry, hereafter referred to as the Port Hill LPOE or just the port. GSA, U.S. Customs and Border Protection or CBP and GSA's contractors, SULL, have prepared a draft environmental assessment or EA in accordance with the requirements of the National Environmental Policy Act or NEPA for short. GSA is the lead project agency for this draft EA. My name is Leon Kolinkovich. I am a contractor with SULL who is supporting GSA in the development of the draft EA. Presenting with me today from GSA will be Melissa Highbre, the capital project manager for the Port Hill LPOE Expansion and Modernization Project. Kevin Ebert from SULL will be helping with the slides and monitoring the chat feature. We thank you for participating in today's public hearing and welcome your comments on the draft EA. We will give everyone a chance to submit their comments at the end of the presentation and we will wrap up the meeting approximately 10 minutes after the last comment is received or by 8:00 PM at the latest. Thank you. Next slide, Kevin? Okay, before we proceed with today's meeting, there are a few housekeeping items to cover. Today's virtual meeting is hosted on the Zoom platform and is being recorded. In the Zoom platform, you will see a toolbar at the bottom of your screen that allows you to send a chat to the presenters. Feel free to send us a note if you encounter any technical issues during the call. Additionally, if you would like to view closed captioning during the meeting, click the "show captions" button at the bottom of your screen. Note that all participants will be muted during tonight's presentation. Following the presentation, we will allow for participants to be unmuted and provide public comments. At that time, we will provide instructions for how to submit comments on the draft EA verbally or in writing. The presentation team will note all public comments for the project record. A recording of this Zoom meeting with closed captioning along with a copy of this presentation will be made available at the project website which is linked on this slide, This link will also be posted in the chat. The project website can also be found via a web search using the search terms GSA Port Hill LPOE and clicking on a GSA-associated web link. Lastly, please note again that this is a virtual public meet, that this virtual public meeting is being recorded and will be retained in the project record. By remaining in the meeting, attendees agree to be recorded. If you do not agree, we ask that you leave the meeting at this time. Next slide. This slide presents tonight's agenda. We will be covering several topics, including the purpose of today's meeting, a description of the key federal law relevant to this project, NEPA, and the EA timeline. We'll then provide project background information and a project overview that includes the purpose and need for the proposed project as well as a brief description of the alternatives that were analyzed in the draft EA. Next, we'll briefly go over a summary of the anticipated impacts of each of the nine affected environmental resources that were analyzed in the draft EA. We will then discuss the next steps for the EA and the overall project schedule. Finally, at the end of the presentation, we'll provide instructions on how to submit your comments on the project and then open the floor to the public for the commenting section, session. Next slide, Kevin? Carrying out our responsibilities under NEPA, GSA is committed to ensuring we provide proper consideration of the impacts of any proposed actions on the natural and human environment. Therefore, to ensure general understanding, I'll be reviewing the overall NEPA process as it relates to the project. The project information provided tonight will include background on the Port Hill LPOE, the purpose and need for the proposed project, and an overview of the alternatives being considered to expand and modernize the port. We will also present the key findings of the draft EA and provide an opportunity for public comments on the proposed project and the draft EA. Your comments will help us assess main concerns, whether additional analysis is required for the final EA. If you'd like additional details on the project or want to access the draft EA or this presentation, we encourage you to visit the project website, Next slide. The National Environmental Policy Act or NEPA is a federal law that requires agencies to evaluate the effects of proposed actions on the environment before taking action, involve the public in the decision-making process and document the anticipated environmental effects of their proposed actions. GSA has prepared a draft EA per NEPA requirements to assess the potential impacts of the proposed changes to the Port Hill LPOE. NEPA does not mandate a particular decision, but it does ensure that the public is engaged in the assessment and that GSA's decisions are appropriately informed. The current draft EA public review period is an important opportunity for the public to provide comments on the proposed project. The public comment period is a means for you to review the draft EA and the adequacy, methodology, and assumptions used in the analysis. Your input will be taken into consideration by GSA during our decision-making process and will be included as part of the project record. Next slide. The public scoping period for the proposed Port Hill LPOE project occurred between May 4th and June 5th, 2023. GSA held a public scoping meeting on May 17th, 2023. The information received during the scoping process was used in developing the draft EA. We are currently in the public comment period for the draft EA. GSA posted in the Bonner County Daily Bee and the Bonners Ferry Herald GSA website and on social media to initiate the draft EA public comment period on January 4th, 2024. The draft EA is available for public review through February 6th, 2024. GSA will consider all substantive comments in preparation of the final EA. The final EA is slated to be published in June 2024. GSA will notify the public when the final EA is available for public review. If the final EA concludes that there are no significant impacts from the proposed project, GSA will prepare a finding of no significant impact or FONZI. If there are significant impacts identified, then GSA would conduct additional environmental analysis by developing an environmental impact statement or EIS. I will now turn the presentation over to Melissa Highbre who will discuss the project background, purpose and need, and alternatives. Next slide.
Thank you, Leon. The main LPOE building is located on the median of State Highway 1 at the intersection with the Canadian border. The port is at about eight miles south of Creston, British Columbia and about 27 miles northwest of Bonners Ferry, Idaho. The land port of entry is located near Eckhart Airport Landing Strip and the Kootenai River Residence Merchant Shops and Refueling Station. Incoming traffic passes on the west side of the building and outbound traffic passes on the east side. The facility is open from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, seven days per week, and processes non-commercial vehicles, buses, pedestrians, and permitted commercial traffic. Next slide. Thanks. The existing LPOE shown in the photo on the slide was built in 1967. The main building is a one-story wood frame structure over a full basement on .58 acres GSA-owned site. The exterior of the main level of the building includes the attached non-commercial primary inspection canopy, secondary canopy, sorry, secondary inspection canopy, two privately owned vehicle inspection lanes, and the one commercial inspection lane labeled in white text on the photo. The interior features an open office work area, staff lockers, a public waiting area with service counter, holding cell, the port director's office and storage room. The basement level houses storage and a furnace unit. All interior spaces are fully utilized with no current room for expansion and no longer meets the operational needs of CBP. Next slide. The purpose of the proposed project is to extend and modernize the Port Hill Land Port of Entry to improve its functionality, capacity, and sustainability. The project is needed to en route inefficient traffic flow and increase inspection capacity, which will improve port safety and security and customer service to travelers and to increase the square footage of the LPOE facilities to support port staff and other personnel. Therefore, through implementation of this project, GSA would support CBP's mission to align current LPOE operations with up-to-date land port design standards and to meet CBP's operational requirements. Next slide. Thank you. GSA's proposed project is to replace the existing port facility with new facility. Two action alternatives evaluated in the draft EA involve acquiring adjacent property for site expansion, demolition, all, demolition of all or part of the existing facility and constructing new facilities. Most improvements would be made to the current site with a potential for expansion to the west. The project's action alternatives are based on land port design standards called the Small Port Prototype, which include a variety of improvements to address existing LPOE deficiencies. The Small Port Prototype Design would include the following features: primary screening inspection booths for travelers and vehicles, protective lane systems to provide officers and booths and to allow traffic scanning with modern inspection technology, canopy systems to provide shelter, interior processing centers for screening individuals, secure holding areas for detainees, improved lighting, which would be designed to minimize light pollution in accordance with CBP's design guides, and buildings that would provide weather protection for security for detailed vehicle inspections and non-intrusive inspections. Next slide. GSA has analyzed one no-action alternative and two action alternatives in the draft EA. The no-action alternative assumes that demolishing, sorry, the no-action alternative assumes that demolition of existing facilities, construction of newer and large facilities, or expansion of LPOE operations would not occur at the Port Hill LPOE. Minor repairs would occur as needed. This alternative will not support the purpose and need, the needs of the project because the current facility does not meet CBP's operational needs. Alternative two, Small Port Prototype with partial demolition, would involve the demolition of all above-ground port structures while retaining and reusing existing foundations and utilities. The new main port building would be one-story and would include a basement. The facility would expand westward onto the acquired land to do a capacity that would allow the port to meet operational needs. Inspection lanes and facilities would be expanded and upgraded to handle traffic flows. High-low inspection booths would be constructed, allowing flexibility for officers to run commercial and POV traffic through the inspection lanes, improving operational efficiency. The revised lane formation with the high-low booths would allow the officers to be in the lanes, which establishes a clear line of sight and improving port security and safety. Alternative three, Small Port with Complete Demolition would be largely the same as Alternative two with key, a few key exceptions. Under Alternative three, all existing above-ground structures, foundations, and utilities would be demolished and a new Small Port Prototype Facility would be constructed according to one of two options. Under option A, the new facility would be one-story with basement. Under option B, the new facility would be two stories. Under both Alternatives two and three, construction would be phased to allow LPOE to remain operational during construction and CBP staff under each alternative would be the same. Next slide. This map shows the proposed project site. The proposed project boundary is shown in red, comprising approximately four acres total. Within the project boundary is the existing Port Hill LPOE, shown in blue, and the properties proposed for acquisition or easement with the privately owned land shown in red, the county-owned land shown in green, and the state-owned land shown in yellow. Both alternatives include the proposed acquisition of up to 1.15 acres of private property and .04 acres of county property and either the acquisition or easement of 1.2 acres of state property. I will now turn it back to Leon from SULL team to discuss how each alternative could impact the natural and human environment.
Considered in the draft EA, analysis is split into two main sections: the affected environment and the environmental consequences. The affected environment for each resource area considered in the draft EA describes the existing onsite conditions. The nine resource areas considered in the Port Hill LPOE draft EA include cultural and tribal resources, geology, topography, and soils, biological resources, utilities, noise, water resources, air quality, climate change, and environmental justice. Each of these resource areas will be defined and summarized later. Resources analyzed and dismissed from further analysis due to low likelihood of impacts include solid and hazardous waste and materials, transportation and traffic, socioeconomic, visual resources, and land use. Next slide. The environmental consequences section analyzes the potential impacts to each considered resource area that may occur because of the proposed project. Impacts to resource areas can be adverse or beneficial and can vary in magnitude or how noticeable the change is, duration or how long impacts will persist after project completion, and extent for the geographic area in which effects would take place. All impacts are adverse unless otherwise noted as beneficial. The no-action alternative provides a baseline for comparison of impacts to each resource area with and without project implementation. For each of the nine resource areas, we provide a brief summary of the potential impacts that would result from project implementation under each of the three alternatives as well as mitigation or best management practices, that is BMPs, that would be implemented to lessen potential impacts. Please refer to the draft EA for greater detailed discussions on the existing conditions and impacts analysis for each resource area. As a reminder, the draft EA can be accessed, accessed from GSA's project website. Next slide. Okay, this slide summarizes potential impacts to cultural and tribal resources in or near the project site. Each slide will be formatted in this way. The potential impacts to each of the three, of each of the three alternatives will be summarized in blue bubbles and any applicable mitigation measures or BMPs will be summarized in the green bubble at the bottom. Under Alternative one, there would be no impacts from routine maintenance activities at the existing port. Under Alternatives two and three, there would be potentially adverse, minor, short-term local impacts to any local cultural resources, including the historic LPOE building, subsistence activities, or tribal resources due to noise, visual, and air pollution disturbances. No archaeological resources have been identified within the project area. If during construction any archaeological resources were discovered, there would be potential adverse or beneficial impacts to cultural resources. Major beneficial impacts would occur if the discovered archaeological resources are not damaged by construction activities and lead to the identification of a culturally significant resource. Major adverse impacts would occur if culturally significant resources were found but damaged or destroyed by construction. To mitigate potential impacts to any onsite cultural resources, GSA has been and will continue to consult with the Kootenai Tribe and the Idaho State Historic Preservation Office, referred to as the SHPO. If archaeological resources were discovered during site work and it was determined in consultation with the Idaho SHPO and the Kootenai Tribe that adverse effects would occur, then GSA would develop a memorandum of agreement or MOA which would include measures to avoid or minimize impacts to archaeological resources. Additional mitigation measures of BMPs may be identified through ongoing consultation with the Kootenai Tribe and the SHPO. Next slide. This slide summarizes potential impacts to geology, topography, and soils onsite. Under Alternative one, no impacts would occur to geology or topography while adverse negligible long-term site-specific impacts to soil would occur during continued routine maintenance activities. Under Alternative two, there would be adverse minor to moderate impacts to onsite geology, topography, and soils in the short and long term due to rock excavation, grading and filling, soil erosion, sedimentation, and compaction from demolition and construction, and the increase in impermeable surfaces such as roads and parking lots. Impacts under Alternative three would be similar to, but greater than those of Alternative two due to additional rock excavation and demolition for the new foundation and utilities. For each action alternative, a stormwater pollution prevention plan would be developed and silt fencing, sediment traps, and other BMPs would be used to minimize erosion and sedimentation. Next slide. This slide summarizes potential impacts to biological resources onsite or in the vicinity. Biological resources are the living components of the natural environment, including aquatic and terrestrial vegetation, wildlife, and species of special protective concern under state and federal law. As no threatened or endangered species are present in the affected environment, there would be no effect on listed species. Under Alternative one, negligible impacts are expected to occur to biological resources during routine maintenance activities. Both action alternatives would result in adverse minor impacts to biological resources in the local area over the short and long term due to noise and visual disturbance from demolition, construction, and port operations, and the alteration or removal of some native vegetation. The alternatives may also have beneficial negligible to minor impacts from the removal of invasive plants. However, due to the implementation of identified mitigation measures and BMPs, overall impacts would be minor and no adverse impacts to federally protected species will be expected. To mitigate potential effects, construction BMPs, such as observing maximum vehicle speeds and locating staging and stockpiling areas in or immediately adjacent to the construction footprint, and adherence to state construction permitting requirements would be used and GSA would comply with all requirements of the state construction permit. If any terrestrial federal or state-listed species are detected during construction, work would stop and consultation with the relevant federal and state agencies would be initiated. Next slide. This slide summarizes potential impacts to onsite utilities. Under Alternative one, no impacts to utilities are anticipated because the existing utilities would be used as they are today. Under Alternative two, existing utilities would be reused to the extent possible so no impacts to the public electrical service would occur. GSA would evaluate whether increased water demand would impact the community well capacity during the port facility design phase, so potential impacts to the water supply are currently unknown. This uncertainty is present in Alternative three as well, though electrical and water uses, usage would be more efficient under Alternative three than Alternative two because new utility systems would be expected to be more efficient. No BMPs or mitigation measures are proposed for impacts on utilities. Next slide. This slide summarizes potential noise impacts onsite and in the vicinity of the proposed project area. Under Alternative one, the same level of noise disturbance from operation and routine maintenance activities are expected at the existing LPOE, resulting in adverse negligible impacts in the short and long term. Both action alternatives would result in adverse minor noise impacts during the demolition and construction activities, while operation of the LPOE following completion of construction would result in similar negligible noise levels as under the no-action alternative. No BMPs or mitigation measures are proposed for impacts from noise. Next slide. This slide summarizes potential impacts to water resources onsite and in the vicinity of the proposed project area. Under the no-action alternative, adverse negligible impacts from stormwater runoff would continue as is typical for operations and maintenance of the existing LPOE. Both action alternatives would result in adverse minor effects on surface water and stormwater and negligible effects on groundwater during demolition and construction activities. During the operation of the facility, stormwater discharge from the project area would result in similar negligible impacts to water resources as under the no-action alternative. Potential impacts from the demolition, construction, and operation of the expanded LPOE would be mitigated through adherence to state permitting requirements, including the implementation of a stormwater pollution prevention plan, which would be developed during the design phase in order to construct features such in order to construct features such as stormwater diversion gutters and culverts. Next slide. This slide summarizes potential impacts to air quality in Boundary County where the proposed project site is located. Under all three alternatives, vehicle emissions would continue from commercial and personal vehicle traffic processed by the LPOE at the current level, resulting in adverse negligible air quality impacts. Under the two action alternatives, construction-related activities and equipment would have negligible impacts on air quality. Notably, under the two action alternatives, the expanded LPOE facility would attain the leadership in energy and environmental design or LEED certification, signifying decreased air emissions at the new facility relative to the existing facility. This would result in minor beneficial air quality impacts in Boundary County. No BMPs or mitigation measures are proposed for impacts on air quality. Next slide. This slide summarizes potential climate change impacts in Boundary County. Like air quality, under all three project alternatives, greenhouse gas emissions from LPOE traffic, HVAC and emergency generator emissions would continue at the same level as the existing facility, resulting in adverse negligible impacts to regional climate change in the long term from continued operation of the LPOE. In addition, climate change would lead to all three alternatives having having a higher risk of region-specific climate hazards at the LPOE, such as increased risk of wildfires, flooding or other extreme weather events. Under the action alternatives, adverse negligible short-term climate change impacts would result from demolition and construction equipment emissions. The expanded LPOE facility would attain LEED certification, signifying decreased air emissions at the new facility relative to the existing facility. This certification would result in negligible to minor beneficial climate change impacts in the long term. No BMPs or mitigation measures are proposed to impacts on or from climate change. Next slide. This slide summarizes potential environmental justice impacts that may result from project implementation. Under the no action alternative, the existing LPOE would continue operations as normal, so there would be no environmental justice impacts. Both action both action alternatives would involve increased noise and emissions during demolition and construction activities, resulting in adverse minor environmental justice impacts to nearby resident communities or Native American populations within the vicinity of the LPOE. There would be adverse minor impacts to tribal cultural and recreational activities along the Kootenay River from construction noise and emissions. No BMPs or mitigation measures are proposed for impacts on environmental justice. I encourage you to review the draft DA for more information on the identified effects on these resource areas and their proposed mitigation measures. GSA invites your input on the environmental analysis and I will explain in just a minute how you can submit your comments. First, I will review the next steps in the NEPA process. Next slide. The NEPA process we've described tonight is part of the overall planning and development process for the proposed expansion and modernization of the Port Hill LPOE. As noted earlier in the presentation, we are currently in the public comment period for the draft DA. GSA is soliciting comments on the draft DA and will consider all comments received by February 6th during the development of the final EA, which is tentatively scheduled for publication in June 2024. A link to the project website is listed at the bottom of this slide. Project updates will be posted there as applicable. Also, as part of the planning and development phase, GSA will select an architectural engineering firm and initiate the design phase by November 2025. Construction is projected to start in September 2026 and be completed by July 2028. These are estimated timeframes that may change and any project updates will be available on the GSA website. And with that, we will now begin the public comment session. Uh, next slide, please. This public comment period provides you with the opportunity to review the draft DA and provide your feedback. GSA values your input and the opportunity to hear your thoughts and concerns about the project. Your feedback is important. There are a few ways for you to submit your comments. You may mail or email written comments to GSA at the addresses listed on this slide. We ask that you include the email subject line, Port Hill LPOE Draft DA. Comments must be received or postmarked by February 6th, 2024 in order to be considered. And the mailing address is, attention, Melissa Highbre, Capital Project Manager, U.S. General Services Administration, 1301 A Street, Tacoma, Washington, You may also submit your comment via the Zoom chat feature or verbally during the comment session, for which we will provide instructions on a subsequent slide. For press inquiries only, please use the contact information provided on the slide. Next slide. Before we formally begin the commenting session, I'd like to go over some basic commenting etiquette. We will review how to make verbal comments first and then how to submit written comments using the Zoom chat feature. Before you begin your comment, please say and spell your first and last name and then indicate any affiliation if you have one. Please be respectful of participants and presenters and please refrain from the use of crass or vulgar language or directing comments towards a single person or group. GSA will not be responding to technical questions during today's virtual meeting, but will consider them in preparation of the final EA. GSA will clarify anything presented in this presentation relating to the project, the NEPA process or opportunities for public participation. To make sure as many commenters as possible get the chance to speak today, we are limiting each person's comments to three minutes. There is a countdown timer you can see now at the top of the screen to show you how much time you have left during your three-minute uh, period, and I believe it should be visible now. So please be respectful of other people's time and wrap up your comments when prompted. If folks go over their allotted time and depending on the number of folks looking to speak, we may need to cut the microphone to ensure there is adequate time for everyone to speak. If you're on the phone and cannot see the screen we are sharing, we will give you a 30-second verbal warning, but you may want to keep. You may want to keep your own timer, so you aren't so you are not surprised by the time limit. We would like everyone who wants to speak to have the opportunity to do so. However, if time allows, participants who have already commented may speak again after all commenters have had an initial opportunity to speak. For those who wish to provide a written comment or written question or comment, you may do so via the Zoom app by using the chat feature, typing your question and clicking send. GSA will read your comments aloud and acknowledge them in the order they are received after all verbal comments have been given. A recording of the meeting will be made and your comments will be included in the project record. We will now be calling on people to provide public comments. You may raise your hand by clicking the button under reactions at the bottom of the screen that says, raise hand and looks like a hand. Please raise your hand just one time. Is doing so multiple times may cause you to lower your hand and lose your place in line. We will call on you by name when it is your turn to speak and the host will unmute you. Please first introduce yourself and spell your first and last name and indicate any affiliation you may have. Once you are done spelling your name, your three minutes will begin. When you are done speaking, the host will once again mute you. Next slide, please. I'd actually keep it on this one.
I think that, yeah, I think that we have our first comment from Doug Kim Brown. I'll be unmuting you now.
Okay, so am I unmuted?
Yes, you are, Doug.
Uh, lower my hand. You want me to spell my name?
Yes, please. First and last.
Doug, D O U G, last name Kim Brown, K I M hyphen B R O W N.
Thank you.
All right, am I ready to go?
You bet.
All right, thank you. A nice presentation so far. Thank you very much. Uh, I, one technical question, you haven't addressed at all the land to the east. There are a series of houses I believe are federally owned and a piece of property that was a for sale that was a duty-free store. So I'm curious as to why that's not included in the description of the project. Uh, my main concern is on the community and human impacts and that is that the proposal for this to upgrade and be more efficient for traffic is in odds with the Port of Entry's own statement that there, uh, the traffic doesn't justify the historic hours of 7:00 AM to 11:00 PM. That historically has been true. During COVID, the border, of course, was closed. About two years ago, it was reopened on the basis of 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM and then put back to 11 to 7:00 PM. So we're missing four hours a day, which is a hardship to the community at large and I would submit, uh, has strong adverse negative impact on the community as well. You simply stopped the traffic. It's worthy of note that the Canadian border crossing has opted to remain open from 7:00 AM to 11:00 PM. And there is no mention in your environmental impact study of the effect or in fact, any communication with the Canadian authorities or community, which would also obviously be affected by this. So those are my main concerns. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Doug, and those again are being recorded here tonight and will be responded to. Not at, not at the moment. Again, we're not here to field those types of questions right now. Do we have anybody else in line there, Kevin?
Yep, uh, our next commenter will be up now. You should be.
Okay.
It should be unmuted now. The floor is yours.
I think you're muted, sir.
What's that?
There, there you go.
My bad.
Hi, my name is Mike, M I K E, Shepherd, S H E P P A R D. Relationship to the area is I am a resident of over 40 years in this particular neighborhood.
Mr. Mr. Shepherd, could I interrupt for a second? I, I'm not sure that you spelled your first name.
Yes.
Did you spell your first name?
Yes. My first name is Mike, M I K E.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I missed that. Thank you. I'm sorry. Go ahead and proceed and Kevin, start that clock when he gets going.
Okay, so I've, I've got some of the same concerns that Doug Kim Brown just mentioned to you. Uh, in your, you, you have three alternatives that you've listed. Why isn't there a fourth alternative of looking at possibly using the old original border crossing building that's been sitting there vacant since the late 60s? That sets 200 feet away. Has that been considered? And if not, why hasn't it been? Because that's a great building. I've been in and out of it many times through the years and it seems like it could be another alternative. Okay, so that's one. Can this group provide me a count as of today of the traffic flow count of a daily or weekly flow count in comparison to what it was pre-COVID? We'll say go back four years. Can, can that be provided to this group? Um, another one I have is if this is approved and goes forward, is there a, an approved vendor list that is not local? Or will that come out of your engineering group that you're going to bring onboard? Or will it be open to local contractors to bid on? Okay. And then, once again, the closing of this border at their time that they've got now just doesn't make sense. It does impact the local businesses, whether they be local in Port Hill or local in Bonners Ferry. And we need this, if this is gonna go through, we wanna see this border stay open to 11 o'clock like it used to be. Cause when we go north, sometimes it's hard to get back across the border. And our, our alternate is to drive all the way to Eastport. It's not even feasible, guys. So let's get real with this. If y'all would look at this, that, that needs to be part of your impact study. And with that, that's all I have and thanks for listening.
Thank you very much, Mike. Appreciate that.
Our next commenter is Dan Connor and I will be unmuting you now.
My name's Dan Connor, D A N, Connor, C O N N E R. I'm the airport manager for the Eckhart International Airport. I guess my first question is, what is gonna be the impact of the property gonna look like? So no matter what, um, there's gonna be some type of construction going on. You know, whether it's a Plan One, Plan Two or Plan Three, there's got to be a staging area. I'm, I'm assuming it's gonna be right down below the hill. There's gonna be driving going down there. There's gonna be a staging area. You know, what's that impact gonna look like as far as, uh, you know, tearing up turf, you know, is there roads could be going across there? Uh, how's that gonna be repaired at the end? Those kind of things. Second question is that, that area down there, you know, it's, it's listed as a state of highways, uh, department's property. It's actually Division Aeronautics. We're part of the transportation department, but it's Division Aeronautics property. Um, and it was being listed as, you know, either easement or a accusation. Um, whose decisions that gonna be? I would think it should be the state's decision, but whose decision's gonna be making that? And then, next question. Will there be a, a, a meeting set up for us to, uh, to meet the airport and go over the, the land side of this? You know, at some point, we'll get to talk about whether there's an option of any sorts, a staging area of any sorts, you know, we're gonna have to talk about the staging area, you know, how much land does it take? Uh, what's the impact look like? You know, is there, I, you know, I know there's some, uh, some failed culverts that are coming from the port down towards the river that are rested out. You know, is that gonna be part of this project to replace, replace some of those items? You know, I guess those are my, my main questions. Um, I think it's, it's something that if we're gonna have a relationship, uh, going through this, we probably need to sit down and have a little bit more of a meeting because I really don't feel like we've been involved in very much this and I think there's a lot more to it.
Thank you, Dan. And anything else in your? And anything else in your thirty eight seconds remaining?
You know, it's I think I have lots of questions, but I think it's it's gonna be one of those that we just need to sit down and meet in front of each other and and talk about it. Because, you know, no matter how you go about this project, we've got probably a lot of things that we need to kind of go over, so I'll I'll just save it for that time.
Okay, thank you.
All right, our next uh, commenter is Lars Jacobson. Uh, the floor should be yours now.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, thank you for this meeting tonight. We appreciate the information. Uh.
Lars, could you please?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
Spell your first and last names?
Lars Jacobson, L A R S, capital J A C O B S O N. Uh, we, again, we appreciate the information tonight. Um. This project seems to be um. An interesting timing, as has been noted before uh, by Mr. Shepherd and uh, and uh. And I forget his last name. I'm sorry, Doug. Um. Kim Brown, I think it was. Um. This port. According to its own um, officers, as early as, as late as, as most recent as today. Have said that uh, they will not ever, and I'm quoting them, they they will never return the hours back to what it was pre-COVID. And my business is the one that you're looking at uh. Taking part of the land in option two or alternate two. Um, I am visually looking at, or a member of my family is looking at that port daily. There is no congestion. There is no line. Um. There is no purpose that I can see or that has been justified by the GSA. Um. To do any action here, as has been stated. Um. The very first thing I think would need to be done is to return the hours back to what they used to be. So we can get a true and accurate um, determination as to what the traffic really is. And until that happens, um, I don't think that we really can get a good analysis of what's going on. Um, I heard the phrase that uh, the facility no longer meets the operational needs. I haven't heard why that is, certainly in my observation and those previous who have spoken. That is not the case at all. It is certainly meeting the needs. Um, and the impact that it would have uh, in doing this. Uh, I think is greater than what's been shared. I would definitely have more questions as Dan said. I think the a meeting face to face where we have some individuals who can answer our questions. Rather than us just asking questions tonight and not getting any answers. Uh, one of the additional questions that I would have is is we have farm to market road and we have trading post road. That converge right there at Highway One where the port of entry is. And what impact would this have on the um, traffic and travel of those roads, especially to get to things like uh, the uh, airport, the Budweiser facility, the businesses that we have there in Port Hill as well. So my time is up. I see that uh. Um, you know, I can't further communicate any questions, but we sure would like to have a time where we could do that. And I think that's a consensus so far of those who have shared their thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Lars. Kevin, do we have anyone else sign up?
I don't see any other hands up, but Cheryl Brown, S H E R Y L B R O W N. Provided a written comment. She asked, do you have any idea what the increased needs for water could be? Will there be a significant increase in the number of people at the LPOE?
Okay. This uh, he he here is the opportunity uh, i- if others who haven't spoken yet. Would would like to get a word in and.
It looks like, uh, excuse me, it looks like Janet Gauss wants to speak.
Yes, David Gauss.
Oh, okay, David. Uh, could you um, spell your first and last name, please?
D A V I D. G A U S E.
Thank you.
And I have lived here since nineteen seventy-two and um. Have used the border very frequently over all those years. And um, uh, like several other people before, um. I have a comment in regard to, I think it was uh, mentioned in the uh, study that I looked at earlier as visitor enhancement. That this would enhance the visitors' experience, which it could. I'm not, that that'd be fine. But the uh, the major thing that would enhance my experience. And I also think especially businesses on both sides is the ability of some free travel. Like till the eleven o'clock like we had it before. And that this has been a severe restriction. And uh, whether a new port's needed or not, I think people maybe that work there have a lot to say about that, would have. But I do think that that's uh, as other people have reflected. Um, if you're gonna spend out that amount of money, um, do something that that's not gonna cost that much money. And uh, uh, and also provides employment for people in the area. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Kevin, did uh, did I see something there? Was was there another chat? Or I saw a written comment pop up uh, momentarily. Is that in chat or somewhere else?
There's another written comment in the chat, although we will be doing verbal comments first, and I see that Mary Ann has her hand up. And I will. We'll be unmuting her now.
Hey, hello. My name's Mary Ann Cruz, M A R Y A N N C R U C E. I'm with Trow Creek Water Association. And we are the water company that supplies water to this um, port of entry. And we would like to be contacted uh, and updated in this process.
Thank you, Mary. Is that in?
Okay, all right, that's it.
Okay, thank you.
And yes, Leon, there there was another written comment from Doug Kim Brown again. And he mentioned that I have a further concern regarding the human impact. I am not a member of the Kootenay tribe. I do empathize with their plight. Family and friends are now banned from border crossings from seven to seven. This is done arbitrarily with no input from those who are directly affected. We are then told that there needs to be improvement to the facility to meet traffic needs. This is not only disrespectful of the tribe, it is onerous.
Thank you, Kevin. Any a- any others who wish to uh, provide oral comments or any of the prior speakers wish to uh? So if if no one is else is standing forth, are there any prior speakers who wanted to have a bit more time, another three minutes, what have you?
I see that Dan put his hand up first, so I'll be unmuting you now.
Yes, just curious if there's any preliminary drawings of any of these, um, you know, the improvements uh, that could be shared.
Melissa or anyone at GSA is is there any uh, type of uh, reply you can give to Dan here on his question?
So we're currently working through the what we call PDS, the Project Development Study. We're anticipating at the thirty-five percent to have some concept drawings. And those are due February eighth with a review period for a couple of weeks between GSA and CBP. Um, at that time, we would have a better better feel of what could potentially, like I said, concept of what could potentially go there. Um. But again, it would be a conceptual. It wouldn't be, we're not in design yet. We're still in the the development portion of this.
Okay.
Hope that answers your question.
Yeah, I just just try and get a better feel of of, you know, try and do my business at the airport and get a better feel of of what's gonna, you know, how it's gonna impact it. So that's all I needed. Thank you.
And I have your name written down, Dan, regarding the airfield, so um, we'll be sure to answer your questions later.
Perfect, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, that's my bad, Mike. Uh, I accidentally put your hand down, so I'm muted you. I'll put you. Uh, I'm muted now. All right, there you go.
Okay. Good, all right. Just just want to recap on some of the things that was said here in the last few minutes since I last spoke. Several E P made some great points. I personally been involved with uh, in my past uh, career with many of these environmental studies up in Alaska. So I I know what's involved. There's a lot of work. And there's a lot of questions to be answered. Lars had a a a great question where the uh, the two roads merged together. What's gonna happen there? That is a, that's a big deal to his business, okay? And to the whole local neighborhood. Dave Gauss and myself probably use that border more than anyone. And just so you know, I used to own the whole village there. Uh, that Lars presently owns now for twenty years. And I can tell you plenty of that about traffic count because I lived by the traffic count. And there's no way that the traffic count today can justify spending any money on a new port. And and believe me, I'm off progress. But there's no justification here, guys. None, none. And somebody's got to come up a lot more than this uh, presentation that y'all are giving. Because it's pretty weak to make decisions at this stage. Because I've been involved with some pretty intense ones. So those are are some of my comments here. And I've stood on that hill and looked down at that border for twenty years daily. And can tell you plenty about traffic count. And it just doesn't make sense that the the Border Patrol and Customs and Immigration would want to put in this facility when they needed a whole lot more in Texas and Arizona. And I don't think there's anybody that disagrees with that. So can can we get some real, real good uh, answers on some of these things like with Dan Connor? He had some great questions. It's gonna be a huge impact for the for the air aeronautics. Mary Ann Cruz, uh, when Mary Ann said she need to know about the water, that's a huge deal. That that you just can't imagine. And if you haven't been talking to these people about water yet, then you you've you're missing a boat. Because that's a huge deal. So I just want to tell you, I'm I'm pretty upfront, I'm being smart ass or anything like that. Y'all need to work on this presentation. Because it's just not there. And that's all I got. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks again, Mike. Anybody else uh, wish to weigh in while we have a chance here? No more um, chat comments?
I see, I see Janet's got got their hand up. I will be unmuting you shortly. All right, y'all should be unmuted and feel free to begin whenever you're ready.
Okay, good evening. I'm Janet Gauss, J A N E T G A U S E. I'm just wondering, I I had looked through the website um, for the Port Hill um. EPA evaluation, and I'm wondering, I don't think I saw the design plat that you had shown us in one of the earlier slides that showed uh, the alternatives one, two, and three. Is that on the website? Can you answer that question?
Those would be in the EA itself. Correct me if I'm wrong, uh, Melissa or um, someone else?
Leon, this is Marshall Pocken with GSA. Yes, the 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 uh, what was represented in the in in the alternatives is in the EA.
It's on the on the website?
Correct. The EA is posted.
I must have looked far enough for it. Thank you.
The draft EA is posted to to the website. It has, it's, we just posted it um, at the start of the public comment period on January fourth. So it, we we just got, I mean, we just finished it, which is why we're we're now in this public comment period, so it it hasn't been there long, but it's it's up there now and it will stay there until we are able to get to a final, which will take a lot of work from based off of the feedback that we've gotten today.
Right, no, I I saw a part of the um, the executive summary and all that. I just hadn't seen the the design that you had drawn out, mapping out at the port where the new construction would go.
The alternatives are, the alternatives are shown in chapter two of the environmental assessment.
Thank you.
You bet.
All right, the next, I see Lars' hand is up, so I'm going to unmute you now.
Thank you. Um, again, Lars Jacobson previously spelled it, um. It seems like a reoccurring theme tonight is a lot of questions have been asked, but the response has been, we're not gonna be answering those questions tonight. So my question, if you can answer it, is when will we be able to get these questions answered uh, and how?
So I I I'll answer, um. I'll be working with CBP as a project manager. I'll be working with CBP to answer some of these questions. Um. The the hours of operation. Completely hearing what everybody is saying, um, I will talk with CBP and we will get a reason out of of the hours that it's currently at. Um, and I'll also, we're also writing down a lot of the concerns. Um, I'm glad that Cheryl Brown and Mary Ann, I think you're, if I wrote your names down right, with Trow Creek Water, I'm glad to know, um, now get a name. So that's gonna be very helpful. We'll be able to reach out to you guys, but the we plan to take all of these, transcribe all these notes, all the questions and get back to you as soon as possible. Um. Jane and Marshall, I don't know if I have a timeframe that I'm held to that I need to get the answers back in time, but I I will work to get them out to you guys within the next week, hopefully. Um.
Melissa, Lars again.
Hi.
To to build on what you just said there, and thank you for that. Um, you know, I think some people I know, I didn't ask some questions because they were already asked and it'd be redundant trying to squeeze things in the three minute timeframe, you know, it just wasn't you know, smart to waste that repeating a question. So when you answer these questions from the different individuals here tonight, will you be getting that to all of us and how will you be getting it to us?
Marshall, can you answer how we're responding to these? I mean, I know I'm responding to you guys, but how are we getting all of these and these answers out to everybody?
Yeah, just a second. Is is uh, I was trying to turn on my video so that you can see me this time. I realized I didn't turn it on last time. Um. Uh, so the public comment period uh, runs through uh, I believe we said February sixth. And so we will be collecting comments through that. Within our, within our project schedule, meaning the project schedule for the environmental assessment, we then have roughly um, with I I don't remember off the top of my head, but there are several weeks that we basically have allocated to accumulate all the comments, because again, the comments are coming, we've we've received written comments uh, to date. We will be receiving additional comments, I imagine, between now and February sixth. We will gather all the comments together and then spend several weeks basically compiling those and and developing responses uh, to those in collaboration between GSA, CBP, uh, and and there were a number of of uh, and and there were a number of of folks who have spoken uh, who who have spoken today that we may need to go back and coordinate with to to frankly have a have a meeting and and address further questions. So the the to to have a response, I don't know that we would necessarily have a response within a week to certain questions, certain things, Melissa, that that you've uh, may be able to work on to get responses to specific individuals within that timeframe. But I think what what we would do is basically compile all the questions and then we will work to respond to every question in terms of how that will be addressed within the final environmental assessment. And then there will be uh, basically as an appendix to the final assessment, there'll be there'll be responses. But before we go to final, uh, anyone that requires basically follow up from today's meeting, we would make sure to have followed up uh, in that regard before we go to final.
So. Thank you for that answer, uh, Marshall. This is Lars again. But you you had said, uh, for those who need a follow up, I think all of us would need desire and want that follow up. Uh, will there be some way of communicating that to all those who are on tonight or even those who submitted a written question? How will we be able to get the answers uh, to our questions?
I think we we're gonna need to uh, I think evaluate that base, basically based off of the feedback we've gotten. I I it can be done either in a in a a written manner where we've we basically, you know, each of you has said, you know, listed one concern, one concern, two concern, three. And you know, there've been ten, ten or so folks who have spoken, so we have thirty concerns. And we will go ahead and and work to address each of those. We can provide that back in writing. If that would be something that would be acceptable to you all. A-again, as as I said before, there may be certain, you know, some of the thirty comments were, hey, we'd like to meet face to face to discuss some specific concerns, perhaps. I I think uh, uh, Mr. Connor about the airport was one with with some of the traffic concerns there. So it may be a a situation that those are the ones where I'm thinking specifically, okay, we may not be able to address that internally to address certain concerns, but others, I think if we can put those in writing and and get those out before we go to final, that would be what what I would think would be a proposed solution.
But again, if there's perplexed, I I'm sorry, I thought you were finished.
That's okay. No, go ahead.
I I I'm a little perplexed because I would think that GSA had done this a few times now in their existence. People usually have questions. There's not a process in which you answer people's questions. I'm I'm a little confused as to why that wouldn't be part of of the overall communication back and forth. Um, it almost appears and um, I think uh, Mr. Shepherd uh, brought this to our attention with his past experience. Um, it almost appears that this is just checking a box and uh, then we're just gonna go and do what we want instead of actually getting feedback and sharing those answers. Um, many times when you get an answer to a question, you have a follow up question to the answer that was given. Um, and so there's gotta be some process or system in place designed to uh, communicate with the individuals that are here tonight and those that will write a letter and others that maybe not didn't even know about this that uh, could be impacted in some way that they would like to see the answers to the questions that have been asked and maybe ask additional questions. Um, I just, I I'm finding it difficult to understand why there's not a process already in place with this. Um, my second comment and and I would really like someone to respond to that. And my second comment is this probably isn't, but to Melissa, you, I think you said that you were going to be contacting them about the hours that have been brought up several times tonight. In your conversations with them, could you just do all of us here in the Port Hill area a giant favor? And would you just please mention to them that all the signage that they have on Highway one and even Highway ninety five, that it still says the port closes at five P M? We have many customers that are rather upset when they realize that they didn't have to rush back to get back across. Um, even though it's eleven o'clock on the Canadian side now. Um, it'd just be great if someone could communicate to them. It'd be nice for them to change the signage. So they changed it fast from eleven to five P M during COVID, but they have not even changed it back to the seven o'clock. Um, so if that's possible, I would submit that as a request. Um, but to to Marshall, I guess, who was answering the questions before, is there not some process that allows for people to ask questions, get answers and that follow up?
Typically, typically for each NEPA project, it's it's on a case by case basis. So this is something that that again, part of why uh, this these meetings are typically set up to accept feedback, incorporate feedback into the documents is and and not necessarily give technical responses is that the government wants to then go back and consider what has been said and and basically incorporate basically have a careful consideration. There's no, there's no desire on GSA's part to be secretive about it, but on the on the other hand, there are a lot of folks who are involved in making decisions on the GSA side that would need to weigh in. And so what 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 our intent is to do is to basically gather information in a meeting like this. And then once we've had a chance to consider it and and work on it and work on it with with uh, the community to then go and provide feedback to everyone. So it to to say that there is a one size fits all process for how that will be shared. I I don't have an answer for that. We don't have a one size fits all and and our intent will be to uh, gather information that we've gotten tonight, gather and and respectfully listen to the concerns that we've heard tonight and then work on uh, answering as best we as best we can uh, so that we find a solution that works for GSA, for C B P and for the community equally.
Lars, I took your I took your um, question in regards to Highway one and Highway ninety five and the signage that needs to be updated. Um, I'm not sure how if the, how we go about updating that signage, but I have your comment written down regards to like specifics to project, the project itself. Current, like I stated, it's currently in the project development study phase, which means we're really at at the beginning of of what we think potentially the port will look like. And as soon as we get more information, once we get that thirty five, we'll be able to share more information about specific projects. Um, how it will work within um, the properties or the property depending on how much how much we need um, for that port. We have, we have the requirements from C B P, which we're basing this project on. Um, in terms of out the the facility not meeting C B P's mission. So there's a lot of um, the port was built in sixty seven, right? So there's a lot of technology that is not incorporated currently within that port. Um, there's a lot of spaces within the inside the port that is completely outdated. And so there's a lot more than than just lanes. It's lanes, obviously, that they're looking at as well. Um, helping putting in new booths so that the security of the officers is taken into consideration along with the passengers, the people, the visitors coming in, things like that. So there's a lot more. Um, I I hear what you guys are saying in regards to you feel like you didn't get a lot of information and we can um, provide more information based off of some of the questions that you guys have asked. Um, but that's more project specific, not necessarily NEPA. So um, both Marshall and I will will take all of your questions. We'll work through them, get you the answers that we need, incorporate neat, Marshall, incorporate what needs to be in in NEPA. Um, but I just wanted to make sure that you guys do know that we're taking your your questions, comments very seriously. And we will get you the answers as as soon as we are able to do that.
And we have everyone's uh, contact information from from your registration for today's meeting and we will use that to to uh, to at least do the initial response. So the or or the response that that makes sure we cover everybody.
Thank you, Melissa and Marshall. Uh, Lars, you have about a minute left from your initial comment. Would you like to use it?
Yes.
Please go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I I would first like to express um, heartfelt gratitude to Melissa and and Marshall um, and uh, and you, Kevin, and um, who was the other gentleman there? I don't see him on here, Leon. Um, for the time and the effort and all that you're doing, we we definitely appreciate this and we need it. Because one size does not fit all, and I appreciate that comment. I hope that we can have additional comment period. It looks like the next one isn't till June. We certainly have a lot to discuss. Certainly on a one on one basis, how this is going to affect my business there. Um, but the airport for sure, the Water Association definitely and and other and other impacts there. Just the two hour meeting uh, or an hour and a half on one evening just is really not gonna, you know, cover everything. We're definitely gonna have follow up questions. And so uh, Melissa, thank you for taking that concern or or that thought about the signage. Uh, Marshall, thank you for discussing um, those options and things. We definitely need them. Please continue to be open with what uh, we're asking and and relate back and forth to us, the things that are needed uh, and are and are happening. Uh, my last my last comment, I see my time is up, is Melissa, all those things that you just listed that need to be added or or upgraded at the port. They all in my uh, uh, assessment could be done with option one. Thank you.
Thank you, Lars. Mike, thank you for your patience uh, here. Please feel free to just begin speaking whenever you like.
Okay. Hey, guys, I gotta, like I said, in my past career, I was involved with over thirty eight feasibility studies in the oil and gas industry throughout the United States. Let me make a couple of little suggestions. We did the same thing you're doing here. And on our PowerPoint or whatever presentation media that we used, we had a because we couldn't answer everything that both of us at once. There there's just no way. Same as what you're trying to do here. So I understand that. But you 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 could put a uh, a page on your on your site and just update it once a week. So you got five answers this week, answer them five questions. And then next week, update it again. And it's it's just a a rolling um, program that answers your questions and people can go to your site anytime, open it up and look at the answers. They can't comment or they can't touch anything, but they can read the answers. We had that uh, whenever I was working for BP and we could open any feasibility and look at, everybody could, the public could do that. So that's just a suggestion uh, to to possibly do. And another suggestion, would it be, could it be considered to have a on-site town hall meeting? Uh, Lars has a facility there large enough for sixty, seventy people comfortably. And we have had on-site uh, town hall meetings there in the past, I think seven of them. Uh, three of them with uh, border issues uh, more or less not not uh, custom and immigration border patrol. So that's just a suggestion. Maybe we could have a an on-site town hall meeting when this gets a little further down the road. And then I have one other question. The the money that's being allocated for this, is this some of the uh, money that's already been approved um, with the CARES or whatever act went through a couple of years ago? Or is this future um, allocations coming from somewhere? Uh, I mean, where's the money coming from? I think that'd be a good answer to get for good. And uh, once again, thanks for the time here. And uh, we'll be looking forward to uh, to some of these answers. Appreciate everything.
I can answer the question in regards to where the money's coming from. So the money's coming from the Infrastructure Act and and the bipartisan infrastructure law. So where IRA and B I L is where the fund it's coming from from Congress. It's already been approved for all of these projects.
Yeah, and this is this is Rick Rock. I'm the project sponsor from GSA. So this is works, works with me. Uh, like she said, it's it's part of this overall three point four billion dollar effort to modernize twenty six ports of entry across the United States. So we're talking about the northern border here, but we're also replacing and modernizing a bunch on the southern border as well. So there's twenty six overall uh, in the country that we're doing this sort of work at. And so this is just one of them. Uh, we obviously have captured your concerns. I appreciate everyone being very patient with the process. Uh, you know, it is a process that we have to go through. And um, we'll we'll take this as a note, maybe uh, look at doing an in-person meeting. That's something we gotta discuss internally, probably on the GSA side to see if we uh, when and how we support that. But I think that is uh, probably a good idea at this point. Uh, we've done a couple, we've done one um, at a different location as well. So uh, we'll take that as a note. Appreciate that.
Thanks. Kevin, is there anyone else who'd like to uh, get a word in?
I don't see anybody with raised hands or with uh, comments in the chat. If anyone like to submit another comment, feel free to put it in the chat or raise the hand using the zoom function.
Well, um, well, folks are pondering that. Uh, I had a few final words here and uh, thank you all for joining GSA's public hearing on the Port Hill L P O E expansion and modernization project. We are grateful for your comments and interaction and look forward to including them in the final EA. We will wrap up the meeting approximately ten minutes after the last comment is received or by eight P M at the latest. Thank you for your time and involvement. And I do see one new message. Is that correct, Kevin?
Yeah, Cheryl Brown provided the contact information for Trow Creek uh, Water Association. So thank you for that, Cheryl. And just a reminder before folks start to sign off of feel free to send comments to this email address. Those will also be considered.
Appreciate that, Cheryl.
I don't see any other uh, folks looking to comment, so I believe that's the conclusion of our presentation. Is that right, Leon?
Well, we're gonna wait ten more minutes since it's not eight o'clock yet. Ten minutes after the 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 last comment, just in case any stragglers show up here.
Go ahead, Dan.
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate, I just think it's a good idea that, you know, we whether we talk on the phone or talk on site, I just think it's a good idea that we get together. It sounds like you're doing some type of, you know, whether it's remodel work or or major work at some point and. You know, we probably need to come up with a game plan of of where to set up for contractors. And how and what that's gonna look like, so. I think you guys have my my point of contact, so, you know, we can have that conversation anytime, but. One way or another, we'll be working together, it looks like, so. Just wanted to reiterate that. Thanks for the meeting. It was great.
Thank you, Dad.
Have a good night.
You too. You bet, Marshall. You there, Kevin?
Yes.
Yeah, then Mar- Marshall says he thinks we can wrap her up.
Yeah, I think it's been about ten minutes. Thanks, everyone, for their time, and I hope everyone has a good evening.
Yeah. Thanks all. Bye bye.
Thank you.